Thank you. Have there been any apologies for absence, Gary?
Yes, Chairman, we've received apologies for absence from councillor Brian Ellis.
Thank you. Have members declared any interests before the meeting?
None received prior to the meeting, Chairman.
Do members have any non-percunory or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare? Jolly good. Gary, have there been any questions received from members of the public?
None received, Chairman.
Peter, are there any updates to government guidance or legislation that the committee should be aware of?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I've just got one update for members with regards to the draft local plan. Members will be aware that on the 19th of July, full council agreed to the publication of the draft local plan, Part One. The six-week publication of the local plan is now agreed to start on the 19th of August, which hopefully members will be aware of. Once published, officers will begin to make reference to relevant policies within the draft local plan, within officer reports to committee, and will provide advice on weight that being given to relevant policies in the plan in the determination of an application. The planning-practice guidance provides advice in this regard, and at this stage, draft policies will attract very limited weight. However, as the plan progresses, the weight to be given to policies increase, and following each stage, officers will advise members of the current position. It's not considered that any of the applications before the committee tonight would conflict with the draft local plan or the strategy, and therefore it is advised that each application must be considered in accordance with the 2002 local plan policies, the MPPF, and any of our adopted guidance policies. Hope that's of assistance, but happy to take any specific questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Peter. Members, have you any questions for Peter on that? Jolly good. So we move on to item six, which is the quarterly planning enforcement report. Beth, over to you.
Thank you, Chairman. You'll note that you have an update, members. If I could just use this report, it just seeks to correct a typographical error in the published report in the main agenda. If I take you straight to page two, which is the central area site-specific updates, the Premier Stores, also known as cost cutter update, where I say that there's a verbal update. We are desperately trying and making last-ditch attempts to assist the complainant to provide us with information to establish that the harm that was being caused by the unit is ongoing. Unfortunately, without the complainant, we can't, we're not going to be able to take action, which will ultimately end in having to take no further action in this case. So, I mean, hopefully by next quarter, we'll know one way or another whether or not we can take this forward. Then if I take you then to page five, the statistics, you'll note in the table at the bottom of the page that this last quarter saw over double the amount of complaints received compared with the previous quarter. But you also note that we closed about double compared with the previous quarter, and our cases on hand has actually dipped, and at the close of business today, it was at 152. Then if I take you to page six, the bottom table, you'll note that our performance against the local performance indicator continues to be high, at 94%. Then if I take you to page eight, you'll note that an appeal has been lodged against an enforcement notice that was issued in respect of an unlawful dwelling in Elstead. This is going to be dealt with by way of written representations. You'll note that the Woodyard, which was a contentious site in Haskam, the notice that we served in respect of that has been quashed because planning permission was granted. Going then to the notices served, I've touched on the previous, the first one in the appeals section. We served a notice which is now under written representations. We served a breach-of-condition notice in Whitley for the use of a courtyard as the driveway, and we reserved the kebab house notice in the High Street just to gain a more robust case against the landowners. So that really concludes the report, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Beth. Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Regarding Premier Stores, I know the delicacy with the complainant. Is there anything that can be done to help protect her? Because I know she's felt subject to intimidation in the past, which is probably why she's scared, to help us. Can anything be done, please?
Thank you, Chair. I think in that instance, she might have to speak to the police because the enforcement team themselves, I mean, that's not something I don't think they can assist with directly. But it might be because they have victim support, the police, so they might be able to get someone to talk to her and talk her through the process and what would happen if it did go to court, et cetera. So she would have support if she were to speak to the police. She felt intimidated in any way, they should be able to help with that.
Councillor Wheatley.
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is this something I ought to do, talk to her, or, yes?
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, you can suggest that to her. I think it's perfectly reasonable for you to suggest that she can speak to an officer if she feels intimidated in any way.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I note the table on page five, bottom of page five, the summary of caseloads. There seems to be a very real downtrend in cases on hand. Is this because there are fewer cases coming in, or are we processing them more efficiently and getting them out of the way? Thank you.
Beth, I'm sure you'd like to answer then.
In short, I mean, you can see, I mean, we received a huge amount of complaints in that quarter. But at the same time, I think we are very, very good, making quick decisions now as to whether or not we can pursue something, and that really reflects in that downward trend. Nothing really tends, despite some of these updates, nothing really tends to hang around for too long before we've made a decision on whether or not to pursue it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. Referring to Govlinge kebab centre on page two, I see a section 215 notice was issued in February 2014, and the notice took effect in March 2014. Another one was issued in May 2016, and notice took effect. I mean, this seems to be a repetitive thing, it seems to be going on and on and on. I'm wondering if we cannot take some kind of more drastic action to enforce these tiles.
Beth.
Thank you, Chairman. I completely agree that that is how it looks. What it doesn't mention here is the fact that we have been tried to be reasonable with the landowner because there was a lot of delay with loss adjusters, et cetera. And whilst that was taking place, we felt it reasonable to put everything on hold, which ultimately, unfortunately, ended up with us having to serve a new notice. But the important thing is here that we do have control, and actually, within a matter of days, this notice will become effective and we'll be able to take formal action. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin.
Thank you. Unless I was missing the last quarterly report, I think this is the first report that Beth has produced for us since she got back from her pregnancy leave of absence, so welcome back. And it's good to see that the downward trend continues. I have a long memory and think back four, five, six years ago when frankly, the enforcement was in a shambles, and it is now in a very good place with the number of cases being closed exceeding those which we are getting, and at the same time with a very high rate for action within 12 weeks. So I'd just like to say thank you very much for a job well done, and please continue.
Thank you. I'm sure we'd all echo those sentiments. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Beth, can you just help me in respect of, on page eight, we have the three priority levels. Just as a matter of interest for me, what priority would have been assigned to the Premier Stores complaint? And what priority for the Govlinge kebab centre?
Thank you, Chairman. So for the Premier Stores, Councillor Lee, that would have been a priority two. And for the kebab centre, that would be a priority one because it's a listed building.
Right. And in those cases, that will, depending on the assessment of those priorities, will also dictate the sort of path of actions that you're going to take, is that right?
Thank you, Chairman. Really, those priorities are set out for initial action. So priority ones, like listed building problems, we undertake to conduct our first site visit within 24 hours because really, you know, this is irreversible harm that you're looking at, and you don't really want it to progress too far. In terms of priority ones, yes, we do move them forward as fast as we can, but it doesn't mean that we prioritize priority one over priority two in terms of the rest of the investigation. It's really that get out onto the site. Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry, Councillor Lee, you wanted to come back.
Yes, please. On the table, just bear with me a second, sorry. On page seven, you know, there's that one that says where the various statuses are. Now, those numbers and those percentages, I'm finding it very hard to consider that they are particularly useful. So can I ask, is that a valid thing to keep on producing? Is it really helpful to you? Because I've not found it helpful to me.
This table, Councillor Lee, was introduced a couple of years ago at the request of members. But if you no longer find it helpful, we're happy to review its usefulness and get a consensus on whether or not it could be left out altogether. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Beth. We can take that forward then, yes.
Thank you. Do any other of the members feel strongly about the use or lack of use of this table? No? Okay. Right. Thank you, Beth, for that.
So we can take it out then, can't we?
I think we're considering, it's under consideration, Councillor Lee. Beth, you want to slip away, don't you, so? Right, moving on to item seven, application for planning permission. In the event of any site inspections being necessary as a result of consideration of the applications at these meetings, at this meeting, these will be held on Monday the 5th of September at a time to be agreed. Now, moving on to the first application, which is item A1 WA 2016 0887, National Trust Information Centre car park, Webb Road, Milford. Zara, would you like to introduce the application to the committee, please, or reintroduce it?
Thank you, Chairman. As members would recall, the application before you was presented at the July committee meeting, where the matter was deferred to consult the application with the Highway Authority and to obtain further information from the applicant. To briefly summarise the proposal again, permission is sought for the erection of a pay-and-display ticket machine to be located adjacent to the Webb Road car parking area. The proposed machine would be approximately half a square metre in area. The location is within Whitley Common, adjacent to the Webb Road car park. This car park is also referred to as the National Trust Information Car Park. At the request of the members, the application was subsequently referred to the Highway Authority for advice, wherein the following advice is provided to council. The Highway Authority has no requirements for the planning application. The County Highway Authority notes the concerns raised that the proposal will result in vehicles choosing to park in the surrounding roads and would cause a highway safety problem. The Highway Authority considers any displacement of parking resulting from the proposal would be very minor and would not have a severe impact on the highway safety. The committee also sought additional information from the applicant regarding the paid parking areas administered by National Trust within the Surrey Hills and confirmation of the funding process. The applicant provide additional information as requested by the committee. The applicant advised that the Surrey Hills is a property in its own right and run like an individual business. All the net contribution that is generated from the Surrey Hills stays within the Surrey Hills area, and car parking areas within the Surrey Hills in 2015 generated a net contribution of £166,000, which has been spent within the area on new signage, car parking redesign, dog waste bin rent, and empty, updating mapping in car parks, and maintenance of these car parks in addition to maintenance of the common areas. The applicant also provided examples of two other ticketed parking locations in the Surrey Hills, being Box Hill Main Car Park and the Demby's Hillside. These two car parking areas, this one in particular is the Box Hill Main Car Park, and this is the Demby's Hillside Pay-and-Display. These areas aren't in close proximity to urban population. However, residential properties are located in close proximity, approximately 800 metres from Box Hill and 100 metres from the Demby's Hillside. The applicant also provided further clarification regarding the parking credits from National Trust members. So each time a member parks at the pay-and-display, they scan their membership card and are provided with a parking ticket that they display. The information from that transaction is imported from the National Trust back office, and a credit of one pound is transferred to the Surrey Hills portfolio. As the Surrey Hills branch of the National Trust is run as an individual enterprise, money is collected from the pay-and-display, enabling the continued maintenance of the car park and the common. If they have advised that if they are unable to collect monies, they may not be able to continue maintenance of the Webb Road car park and may consider closure of the car park. Having regard to the determining issues, officers put forward the recommendations as set out originally, that subject to conditions one to two and informative one set out in the report, permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Zara. The gentleman who was going to speak isn't here, so I don't think, no, Mr. Dudley's not with us. So go straight to members. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I was the ward councillor who brought this to the committee's attention in the first place. The reason I did say is that locals in the area who find that they can't park in the car park because for various reasons tend to park the other side of the road in Gaston Lane. And as you can see from the map on page 16, where Gaston Lane goes into Webb Road, it is on, the A286 is on a bend. Cars come very fast from the Milford roundabout going towards Hazelmeir. Around that bend, and any children with, or parents with buggies and children and dogs crossing that corner is quite dangerous. And therefore, my objection remains that this is an inappropriate place to put a car park and can cause, despite Surrey Highway's objection, that there is minimal damage, could cause a serious accident at some stage in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you, Chairman. I think what we have in essence here is not whether the car park can or cannot be put in the location that it is. That is already set, and that's not up for debate at this meeting. What we are actually here to judge is whether it's acceptable to have a small pay-and-display machine. It's not about the rights and wrongs of whether the pay-and-display machine is there or is not there. It's about whether the machine itself can be cited and whether there is essentially significant harm done to the green belt by this small ticket machine. I appreciate all of the difficulties that the local residents there believe that will result from this. But unfortunately, that's not actually a material planning issue for this instance. If we were looking at whether there should be a car park or not, then I think there would be different views, and perhaps the highways authority might have a different view. But the car park is there, the car park is set, and we're looking at a ticket machine. And I cannot see any justifiable reason why a pay-and-display ticket machine cannot be cited where it is proposed to go. And I will support the officer's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Peter Martin.
Thank you. Before I say what I want to say, could I just have clarification as to the status of Webb Road? Is that an adopted road by the highway, or is it actually part of Whitley Common and therefore within the ownership of the National Trust?
Officers.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Councillor Martin. As far as we're aware, it's under the ownership of the National Trust. Sorry, the car park is part of the ownership of the National Trust. I haven't got the specific classification of Webb Road itself to hand, I'm afraid. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. That's a sentence. I'm afraid I wasn't at the last meeting, I was away on vacation, and so I'm not up to speed with what was said then. I agree with Tom Martin to the degree that if they wish to put a pay-and-display, regrettable though that is, because I would prefer it to continue to be free and open, I think that they have every right to do that. My only concern is the impact on residents in Webb Road if that is an adopted road, i.e. if it weren't an adopted road and it was part of the National Trust, it will be up to the National Trust to ensure that people don't park there. If it is an adopted road, then it's a matter for enforcement, of the normal enforcement, and that would come within the aegis of Surrey County Council. I'm the county councillor for that area, and I can just see now the uproar that that will cause if people are parking down Webb Road and/or across in Gaston Lane. And the regret will be at some point, we'll have to fill it with double-yellow lines, which will be grotesque. So although I sympathise with Tom Martin, I'm inclined to vote against, even though highways have said that they don't believe that it will be a substantial impact. And of course, the MPPF is a nuisance because it says it has to be terrible and really a dreadful intolerance in terms of car parking levels, and before we can legitimately say that's good grounds for voting against. And that gives me a problem because it's very difficult for me to judge the degree to which this will be unacceptable. But clearly, I think it will have an impact on the surrounding roads.
Thank you. Councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm in mind to agree with councillor Tom Martin, actually. This is an application for a parking ticket machine, not the car park. And the car park is already there, I believe, so, I mean, I'll be going along with the officers on this case. Thank you.
Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you. I too think that Tom Martin actually hits the nail on the head, but there are other reasons why I, I mean, I think we've got to look at the ticket machine in isolation in a sense, and I don't necessarily have a massive problem with it. It's going to be next to or very close to a rather large National Trust signpost, signboard, anyway. I don't think the impact's going to be as bad as councillor Peter Martin makes out. I use this as common quite often to walk my dog. I think there's rarely more than 12 cars, maybe 15 parked in Webb Road when I go at certain times at weekends, even at lunchtimes during the week. There are two other car parks within very close proximity which will get you onto Whitley or Milford Common, one at Milford Common and one just off Lee Common Road, I think, or Lee Coach Road. And also, Lee Coach Road is, there's plenty of people park off the side of the road. That's not a very well-used road, which obviously comes to or off the A3. So if people start parking there instead of there because they want to stop, avoid paying, I don't see it's going to be a massive problem because, as I said, it's not a very well-used road, and it's nowhere near any residential properties, so homeowners wouldn't have to worry about cars being parked outside their houses. So I think people argue, if they're going to park somewhere other than Webb Road, I think it's less likely to be Gaston Lane than some of the other alternatives I've outlined. So I think we'll go with the officers.
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you for allowing me to come back, Mr. Chairman. I think Webb Road is in fact a national, it's owned by Surrey Highways, and it is in fact an emergency road that links to the A3 for accidents on the A3, so ambulances can go up and down. It's not owned by the National Trust.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I thought it was important, given the results of our last meeting, to defer, but I actually go and look at this particular road and car park. So I did yesterday at 10 o'clock in the morning. So my experience then was that there were three cars in the car park area, but there was also one in front of the car park. And it is very clear, because of the nature of each side of the road leading into the car park, that those sides are used by people anyway to park because they're badly damaged, but they've pushed back the vegetation, so it's clear that people are parking there anyway. There is a concrete pillar there to hopefully connect donations. Don't know what anybody else thinks about human nature, but I don't think there'll be too many donations placed in there. I was very pleased that this time we have got the context of the pay-and-display and the fact that the monies won't sort of drift away to anywhere in the National Trust, but it will come back to more local requirements. And given that I believe that there is nothing in life free, somebody's got to pay somewhere, sometime, and there are upkeep of that car park and other aspects of the National Trust operation. And bearing in mind the sort of guidance that we work under and the rules that apply, I find myself now supporting the officers without any reservations. Thank you.
Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I must echo councillor Lee's opinions. I believe that the revised report has answered our concerns previously expressed. I also welcome this as a portfolio holder for economic development. Any economic development is good for Waverley. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, any last questions before we move on to the recommended, oh, councillor James, yes, sorry.
Thank you, Chairman. As the other ward member, I think I deferred for the highway report, which I think are interesting. Again, I don't think they actually answer the concerns of the 70-plus residents who objected on highways. And they said they just didn't think it would make any significant bearing. That's fine, but I do remember at the seminar that we attended here from the Highway Department, that, it was the inspector, actually, the planning inspector, when we asked him questions on highways. And he did categorically say that if local residents had a great feeling about highways, that we as the elected members had the moral duty, if we also believed it, to agree with what the local residents say. Whilst I don't know who came from Surrey County Council, he probably does know the road from Milford to Hazelmeir. On planning grounds, changing that, so on the planning grounds, I agree, there are no reasons to refuse. On planning grounds, but my moral feeling is that if a mother and a child walking a dog across that road is run over and it's a bad road, I don't want to be responsible for giving permission. That is my feeling, and it's a question of whether that feeling overtakes the planning policy. And that's why I'm just doubtful just at the moment, Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, councillor Upton.
Mr. Chair, my major concern with all open land and free land, open to the public, is the urbanisation of it. And this particular seems to be another little thorn in the side of urbanisation, particularly as they were granted permission to build properties on that area for use. And apparently, it's restricted to public use now because they can't upkeep the road. But it has parking facilities there, as I understand it. And how long is it before we have other applications coming before us to consider the amenity and the convenience of the people administering this area? It was a public access area before, and I've got a feeling that that car park was generated by previous users and established before the National Trust took this land over, anyway. Whilst I agree it is a planning operation, I'm just not happy about seeing incremental Whilst I agree it is a planning operation, I'm just not happy about seeing incremental increases on public-owned or not public, public-accessed areas for increasing the urbanisation. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Thank you. Any last comments before we move to the recommendation? So the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 2 and informative 1 as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. Move on to item B1, WA 2016 1114, Craven House Station Road, Godoming. Zara, it's your turn again.
Thank you, chairman. The application before the committee seeks approval for the construction of a third floor to provide one-bedroom unit and a two-bedroom unit above Craven House. Craven House is currently undergoing the conversion from office space into 21 one- and two-bedroom units, proposed to be completed in September this year. The site is located east of Godoming Train Station, and that's Craven House there, and the car parking adjacent to it. This visual representation provides the rendering of the proposed additional floor up here, and this is the existing elevation for Craven House. The structure above here on the existing building is houses, utilities, boilers, switches and a water tank for the building, and this would be converted to accommodate the lift to the additional floor and upgrade the staircase. The current maximum height of the existing building is 13 metres. This is the proposed elevation, architecturally drawn. This proposal would have a mono-pitch roof design and would have a maximum of 15 metres, so this would be a minor increase of 2 metres from the existing building. The extension would be constructed of materials to match the material finish of the 21-unit This is the site plan showing Craven House and the car parking arrangement. Combined with the 21 one- and two-bedroom units, the development would require 24 car parking spaces. The site currently provides 26. A recent planning application on the site has been approved to provide an additional eight car parking spaces, and they're immediately adjacent to Craven House in this area here. This would give the development a total of 34 car parking spaces. This is the proposed floor plan. As you can see from this floor plan, this additional story has been set within the outer walls, so there's a minimum of 1 metre clearance from the outer projection. And this is just a site photograph of the roof area proposed to be converted. The proposal meets the minimum standards for gross floor areas as set out in the government's technical housing standards, the National describes base standard 2015. And this is the front of Craven House. And this is the entrance from station approach, and this is the main car parking area that would be utilised. The concerns were raised regarding the proposed addition overshadowing the adjacent property of Mountain House. However, considering the proposal would be set within the main area of the building and the northern aspect of Craven House in relation to Mountain House, it's considered that there would be no material harm from overshadowing to the adjacent property. As previously indicated, the proposal would comply with the parking guidelines and has immediate access to public transport and Godoming High Street. The proposed would provide modest amenity space for the residents, and as the development is two- and three-bedroom apartments, there is a possibility that small families could occupy these apartments. Therefore, the provision of appropriate amenity space is a matter for consideration. The proposal is located within convenient walking distance to the town centre and to Philip's Memorial Park, which is approximately 200 metres, and this is considered an acceptable alternative. Despite the additional floor, the proposed would not appear out of character, as the built form is consistent with the existing design of the building, and the proposed development is located approximately 45 to 35 metres from adjacent residential buildings on Station Road, and would not result in material harm to the residential amenities of this property, of these properties. Having regard to the determining issues and the merits of the proposal, officers recommend that, subject to conditions 1 to 6 and informatives 1 to 7 as set out in the report, permission be granted.
Thank you, Zara. Open it up to members and councillor Thornton.
Thank you, chairman. When I first heard about this, I actually was a bit dubious, but I think it actually looks really good, as I'm the ward councillor, I think it's really good, and I'm not too sure about the provision of amenity space, because just down the road you've got a lovely park and things like that, so I think it ticks all the boxes for me, so I'm happy to go with the officer's recommendation. Thank you, chairman.
Councillor Peter Martin.
This transforms a wholly uninteresting drab building into a slightly less wholly uninteresting drab building, but there we are. I'm opposed to the loss of commercial space in this town, and this was a leading example of a loss of commercial space, but that battle on this building has been fought and lost tragically, so now we're left with merely popping two or three more houses on the top of it. Whilst I'm not particularly keen, I can't find any reasonable reason to say no, so I shall have to say yes.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, and then councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I feel that this proposed extension provides good room spaces for non-crammed living, therefore makes a positive contribution to healthy living, and given that we have got accepted parking guidelines, I have nothing more to say, other than it's a delight to see that there's some extra spaces there compared to normal. The inset of the structure on the top of the present roof, I think, falls within standard good practice and certainly enhances the overall look of the building, and I am particularly pleased in condition 6 that we have an EV charging point to be provided. I mean, I'd personally like to see more EV charging points to try and improve the possibility of people taking up much more environmentally friendly vehicles, but one is better than none, so thank you, and I will certainly be supporting the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wheatley.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Obviously, it's sad that the commercial world has gone the way it has, which means the offices were unused, but I think this is a good use of the building, and I quite like the look of the penthouse, it does stop it being quite such a block. Of course, I'd love to see a multi-story car park near the station somewhere, but that's something different. However, we were shown Mountain House, we weren't shown whether it has its own, does it have its own car parking area? It doesn't try and pinch anything from this place, does it?
It does provide, it does have its own car parking area here, and also they've got additional car parking here into the rear.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to support councillor Lee in his desire for electronic vehicle charging points, and I would encourage all plans and officers to consider this as not an optional extra in future.
Thank you. Anybody else before we move to the recommendation? Okay, so the recommendation is that, subject to conditions 1 to 6 and informatives 1 to 7 as set out in the report, permission be granted. May I have those in favour of the recommendation to grant?
That's unanimous.
Jolly good. Thank you, members. The recommendation to grant is agreed. Item B2, WA 2016 1183, Heath Hall Lower House Road, Bolhead Green, GU86NW, and we're also going to take with this, as the two are both on the same site, item B3, which is WA 2016 1184, Heath Hall Lower House, same address. Zara, would you like to introduce the two applications to the committee, please?
Thank you, chairman. There are two applications before the committee. The first application is for the construction of a 60-metre-by-20-metre sand school with open post and rail fencing, and the second application is for the construction of a U-shaped stable block with eight horse stables, feed store, hay store and tack room. The stable would have a maximum height of 4.8 metres. The sand school would be located in this location within the field, and the proposed stable block directly to the south of the sand school. Here is Green Sandway, and this is, this black line is French Lane. That's just an elevation of the proposed fencing for the sand school, and this is the layout for the sand school. This is the site photograph looking north towards the sand school site, and this is a block plan for the proposed stable block. Here you'll see this section of hedging is the only proposed vegetation to be removed for both developments, and this is an existing hedge formation and trees screening the stable block. And this is just the elevation of the proposed stable block. And this, sorry, this is looking south towards the stable block, this is the section of hedging that would be removed to accommodate access for that stable block, and this is the area within the hedged area. The application for the stable block received objections from the public, as well as an objection from the parish council. The application for the sand school did not receive any formal objection from the public, but did receive an objection from the parish council. However, objectors to the stable block did also make reference to the sand school, although they did not make a formal objection under the application. The objections raised concerns regarding the impact to the proposal on the green belt and the AOMB, and its close proximity to Green Sandway, causing harm to the visual amenity of the area, and the development being inappropriately increasing traffic on French Lane and the village of Bolhead Green, and Bolhead Green would be to the south of this site. The objections raised by the parish council and the public were given careful consideration. This map provides an indication of the proximity of the sand school and the stables to the A3, and it shows the access track that would be the main access for the development here. This access track is owned by Heath Hall Farm, and with a legal right-of-way for the owners of Heath Hall, the applicant has confirmed that access is restricted to a non-commercial use. Paragraph 89 of the MPPF stipulates that new buildings within the green belt may be considered inappropriate development, except where they fall within exceptions stipulated under paragraph 89. One of these exceptions under paragraph 89 includes the provision of appropriate facilities for outdoor sport and recreation, as long as it preserves the openness of the green belt. As the proposal is for a sand school and stables, the facilities would be considered outdoor recreation, and the application could be considered within the exceptions of paragraph 89. The proposal would be for private use only for the sand school and the horse stables. The proposed fencing for the sand school are open post and rail, and would not be out of character with the rural area that it would be set amongst, and would not cause visual harm. The design of the horse stables is considered to be of high quality and would be in keeping with the outbuildings in close proximity. The stables would also be located within the corner of the field, adjacent to Green Sandway, but is also protected by heavy vegetation. The stables would not be readily visible from French Lane, and stables within the rural area are not considered to be out of character. A main concern that was also raised were the stables used for commercial purposes. A condition has been recommended on both applications that would limit the use of the development for private equestrian purposes and silvery to Heath Hall, and cannot be used for commercial purposes. So in the instance that the field is sold separately from Heath Hall, the buyer could not lawfully use the sand school or stables without first obtaining approval for the commercial use of the facility. Additionally, should Heath Hall, the owners of Heath Hall, want to utilise the facilities for a commercial purpose, they would also need to obtain planning approval for that commercial use. Another main concern that was raised in relation to the proposal was the increase of traffic on French Lane. The parish council requested that council obtain advice from the highway authority on this, this advice was subsequently obtained. The highway authority advised that there was no material impact on the highway safety and had no requirements for the development. Access to the site is via right-of-way, and this right-of-way is located close to the A3, and it's approximately 880 metres to access the A3. Additionally, given it is for private use, vehicle movements as a result of the domestic use would only be domestic in volume. I bring your attention to the update that was provided to the members. Three additional representations were received since the preparation of the agenda item. In addition to the concerns raised by the regional objectors, concerns were raised regarding the loss of farmland. The area identified for the stables was overgrown and has not been utilised for farmland purposes. Therefore, the use of the area for stabling would not reduce what's currently available. Additionally, it was considered that the proposed sand school would take a modest portion of the field, approximately 0.1 hectares from the 4.1 hectares on that particular field, and would not prevent the remainder of the field being utilised for grazing or silage purposes. Having regard to the determining issues and the merits of the proposal, officers put forward the following recommendations, that for WA 2016 1183, subject to conditions 1 to 4, and informatives 1 to 2 as set out in the report, permission be granted, and for WA 2016 1184, subject to conditions 1 to 6, and informative 1 to 3 set out in the report, permission be granted. Thank you.
Thank you, Zara. Right, open it up to members. Councillor Tom Martin.
Thank you. I just wondered if I could get clarity from our officers. On page 82, we're saying that the application could be considered within the exception of the provision of appropriate facilities for outdoor sport, outdoor recreation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and yet we're also saying that this is for private use only, and not open to anybody else, it's for family use, so it's not really providing facilities for outdoor use. I mean, it's a fairly, I mean, is that exception acceptable for private use of individuals, as opposed to it being there to facilitate outdoor use and recreation space for the public? And I just wondered if I could get clarity from the officers to exactly what really that, that exception to the policy is for, because it, I think it really dictates which way or otherwise we ought to be falling on this application. Thank you.
Officers.
Thank you, chairman. Thank you councillor Martin. Yes, it's a very good point, it's a point we considered to some extent in considering the application, both of them. There's no definition of it says public outdoor sport or private outdoor sport, but this application is clearly for a sport use, and as far as we're aware, there's not an interpretation, so we feel it sits comfortably within that paragraph 89 sort of definition. That may be an interpretation, I'm not aware of any specific case law around that, I'll look to Erica Scarlett. I'll look to Erica Scarlett if she had anything further to add, but off the top of the head. But we do feel it sits comfortably within that. But it, as I say, the MPPF does not provide you with a definition of that and an interpretation of how that's applied. So if members felt that that was not appropriate outdoor, that'd be a consideration for them to take. Thank you.
Councillor Martin, you'd like to come back?
If I could, because I feel that perhaps the spirit of it would be that the expectation is there for public use. I mean, it's for the benefit of people. And actually, what this isn't, this isn't providing any benefit to the general public. This is just providing benefit to one family. And I have to say, appreciate what the officers said and it sounds as if this is almost case law now, but I perhaps fall on the other side, that I don't feel that this is an exceptional change to policy and that it doesn't meet that. Because my, from my feelings, the context, my personal feelings on the context, the spirit of that, is that it should be for the public. But it'd be interesting to know what other members feel.
Thank you. Councillor Reynolds.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, I sort of know this area reasonably well and my personal view is that a field in the countryside is actually the perfect place to put a stable and a sand training area for exercising horses. It's fairly well screened, it's not really going to take away views from, of the local area from the Green Sandway because as you said, it's quite a lot of built-up places certainly in front of the stable block and in fact the sand training area isn't on the Green Sandway. I have no objection to this at all.
Thank you. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd just rather reiterate to councillor Tom Martin's concern and I'd like to ensure that condition three on page 73 is rigidly enforced, that the use of the sand school is purely for the owners of Heath Hall and the immediate family and is not to be used as a public facility because the road from Bullhead Green going down into Brook and also French Lane is not wide enough to accommodate masses of horse boxes going back and forth. So I do think that this should be a condition that is rigidly enforced and is purely for the use of the family and no one else.
Thank you. Councillor James.
Thank you, Chairman. Interestingly enough, it's condition three on this one and condition five on the next one. Having been sort of involved over my past counselling with many new stables in the countryside, now in the national park, I would like those conditions tightened up and my bit is possibly that should the stables no longer, or should the sand school be, no longer be required, it should be removed and returned to grassland. Should the stables no longer be required to Heath Hall, they should also be removed and the land returned to grassland because, and I'm sure you probably all have millions of them, that if that bit of land can be sold off, because they've got plenty of other land, then before you can say, Jack Robinson, we have an application to turn that beautifully constructed eight-stable block into residential because they own that bit of land, they've got a sand school on it and they've got a nice, several acres to horse, but they need to live on it. Therefore, we will get that application, not now, not in five years, but it will be in 10 years' time. You know, I can point you to many in Lip Hook and Bramshot and therefore I would like those tightened up because they might need them at Heath Hall, but should they sell it off, they might not need it. So we can easily say, remove the sand school, grassland, remove the stables, grassland, full stop. Doesn't matter about whether it's commercial use, they can't use it for commercial use because it'll be gone when it's no longer required for the use of Heath Hall. Thank you, Chairman.
Officers, any comments on the enforceability of that?
Thank you, Chairman. We'd be happy to add those additional comments to the condition three and five. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. This is a rural setting and I think this is a perfectly reasonable thing for, for the property owners to ask to add to their, to their, to their home. I think the loss of farmland is negligible. I think the impact on the green belt is negligible. I note the comments on French Lane, but it is only 880 metres to the A3, although I wouldn't like to see a regular procession of horse boxes up and down. I agree with that. It seems to me that with the conditions that we've already got, that this is okay, although condition three talks about it shall not be used for any commercial equestrian purpose. Would this, what about if they were to sort of voluntarily have a charitable gym carner or something of that sort where numbers of boxes, horse boxes and so on would come, but it wasn't a commercial venture? Would they fall foul of the fact that it's only for private use in a situation of that sort? So I guess I would, perhaps if there's any doubt, to tighten that one up. I'm not sure that I'm altogether happy with going as far as councillor Gray has proposed, although I could be convinced, sorry councillor James has proposed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think that this is quite, oh good, it's gone. I think this is quite acceptable, but to go back to Mr Tom, councillor Tom Martin's point about someone having this sports use for their own use, it's, to my mind, it's no different, although on a larger scale, of someone sticking a tennis court in their garden. It's a sports use, all right, so they're very fortunate and can afford something a little more elaborate, but from what I understand, it might even reduce some of the traffic because then the horses don't need to go regularly elsewhere for their training. So it might even be beneficial for the area. And I'm with the officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I think that councillor Tom Martin does raise an important issue between private and public. However, at the moment, there is no differentiation, so for me, I can't really sort of consider that in my overall conclusions. I'm always very concerned about people writing in who are local and know the area and take a look at their objections. Now, there are a few that I believe are valid in the sense that they are quite factual and not emotional. And it is to do really with vehicular access and passing places because of the narrowness. And I think that tonight, looking at the location plan map, should I say, and that access road showing quite clearly how it's delineated, bearing in mind that we've not only got the stables for eight horses, but we've also got feed store and hay store and tack room. Now, if that was a nice straight Roman road, that would be marvellous, but things are going to be difficult manoeuvring the supply vehicles and horse transport vehicles round those two bends. I'm sure there's maybe already damage been done and there will continue to be damage done. So that does concern me and this condition or these conditions that restrict the use to the family or the family-owned premises, I think that is extremely important and tightening up, as has been suggested, is essential. Is it possible to say the sort of perpetuity so that when the family sell their location, these same conditions would still apply to the use of these facilities? I think I've just got the answer, but please.
Yes, please, could you clarify?
Thank you, Chair. If I can take the answer. It's up to members whether or not they want to ask for a legal agreement because that will sit, it will bind the land. So whether they sell on or not, it will still be on the title and on the land charges register. And you can actually restrict the use, you can suggest that it's suddenly a private use, you can put a condition, well, not condition, but a clause in that says it can only be used as stables, not as a dwelling. So if in the future they breach the condition and we're not aware of it, they can't then come in. Well, if they come in for a certificate, we can grant the certificate, but the legal agreement itself will stand alone. So they'd have to overcome that hurdle as well. So you could control with both conditions and a legal agreement. The legal agreement itself will give you a little bit more, more of a safety net really if they do somehow breach the conditions and we're not aware of it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Lee, would you like to come back and then councillor Upton?
Can I just say that I would support that approach? I don't know what my colleagues think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. We can come back to that. Councillor Upton.
A thought that comes to mind is, are these eight new horses coming in or does the Hall already have an establishment with equine base that all they're doing is modernising their facilities? My concern as an ex-rider are the number of horses now using the Surrey byways and saddle paths. I've no problem with the design. I follow councillor James's concern about conversions at a later date and Lee's point of perpetuity, but as a matter of interest, I just wondered if it's an existing establishment or is it being brought in as a new venture?
Zara, I'm sure you know the answer to that.
Thank you, Chair. The owners of Heath Hall actually own eight horses that they have to stable off-site at a commercial facility. So they are wishing to actually bring their horses home to the facility to obviously avoid paying commercial charges for their horses and to also be able to exercise the horses within their property.
Can I just come back on that, Chair? That means eight more horses entertained in this area on the byways and causing quite a bit more damage, I would imagine. I have no problem with that, but as an ex-rider, it does concern me, a number of horses appearing in Surrey.
Councillor Thornton.
Thank you, Chairman. With that bit of information, I think that clears a lot of things up. They've got eight horses elsewhere, they want them, maybe they've just moved in, you don't really know. So, I mean, with the conditions in place and, and all that sort of thing, I think I'll go with the officer's recommendation. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other comments? Officers, have we got a draft wording for either of these conditions that have been proposed that we could put to the members as a proposal? Yep, please.
So, thank you, Chair. Chairman, what I'd said was, under condition three was, it said, if the sand school is no longer required for the use with Heath Hall, it should be removed and returned to grassland. And on the other one, it said, should the stables not be required, should the stables not be required in the future use for Heath Hall, they should be removed and the land returned to grassland. It's in with Heath Hall is the key.
Thank you, councillor, thank you councillor James. I'm sure the officers can put that into their planning terms if need be. So do we have a second for that proposal? Councillor Upton, right, members, all those in favour of that additional condition being added?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
And those against?
One.
Abstentions?
Three.
Okay, so that additional condition will be added. So we move to the recommendation. If we go to the first recommendation, which is relating to the sand school. Ah, sorry, councillor Lee, did you want to move for an additional condition as well?
It was the inclusion of a legal agreement that I was interested in.
Yes, you're.
To strengthen the condition.
Are we happy with that, officers?
From my point of view, Chairman, I don't think it is fully necessary. It's a judgement for members. We haven't put it forward to you with a 106, or suggested drafting of a legal agreement of section 106. Erica's suggested that as an option, but feel this, you know, the conditions do do that, it's just an additional fallback. We think, you know, they could try and overcome a condition. It's a stronger position, but it's an appropriate way to deal with it by a condition also. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Martin, you wish to comment?
I did. I don't really support this because I think ultimately legal agreements are costly. Appreciate that the costs that we would incur would be put on to the applicant. So essentially, they've got our legal costs, their legal costs. I think it's overly bureaucratic and we've already got conditions. I don't think this is so strong a case that it would warrant having a legal agreement, though I appreciate the advice. I just think it's unnecessary. Conditions are fine.
I agree with that and also I would say that it's, it would create another precedent. I wouldn't want to see legal agreements added as a matter of course to all such conditions. I would prefer to keep it simple and so I would add proportion, so I would not be supporting a proposal to put a legal agreement in.
Councillor Lee, do you still want to make that proposal?
If you needed me to answer, I concur with the experience being shown and the wisdom being shown by my colleagues. Thank you.
So can I just confirm that that proposal is withdrawn? Thank you very much. So we can move to the recommendation of the. Right, so the recommendation for the first one is subject to conditions one to four and informatives one to two as set out in the report, plus additional comment or condition regarding the return to grassland to condition, the additional comments to condition three about returning to grassland as just voted on, permission be granted. All those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, that's unanimous.
Thank you, members. And secondly, it be resolved that subjects to conditions one to six and informatives one to three as set out on the report and additional comments regarding the return to grassland to condition five, permission be granted. This is for WA 2016 oblique 1184. All those in favour, please?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, that's unanimous also.
Thank you, members. So both recommendations to grant are agreed. Right, that's the end of our business for this evening. Thank you very much for your time. Thanks, Gary. How did your report, your? How much longer do you have to remain?